I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Dwyane?
Andy Merrick?
Here.
Tracy Schwarm?
Here.
Paul Jonathan?
Here.
John Schuster?
Here.
Ruth Selby?
Ruth Selby?
Here.
And Kim Dolan? Here. At this point, I'll go to election of officers.
I guess I'll make a nomination of Paul for Chair.
Paul's second.
Is there any other nominations for the Chair?
Roll call vote.
Yep, okay. We'll do a roll call vote. And Dwight will be finishing up. Andy Merrick?
Yes.
Tracy Schwarm?
Yes.
Paul Jonathan?
Yes.
John Schuster?
Yes.
Ruth Selby?
Yes.
Kim Dolan?
Yes.
Now, at this point, Paul, you can take over the media if you want.
Um, continue to the, as you're doing for the rest of the Oscar election. He would like you to continue on to the.
Okay. So she is.
One of the first in the Oscars should be.
Uh, Vice Chair? Any nominations?
Would you like to do it, John? Sure. Now, any John Schuster for Vice Chair?
The Secretary?
Any other nominations? Andy Merrick?
Yes.
Tracy Schwarm?
Yes.
Paul Jonathan?
Yes.
John Schuster? Ruth Selby?
Yes.
Kim Dolan?
Yes.
Ruth. She has one voice. And for Secretary. Ruth.
I was gonna keep it.
Oh.
I was just gonna keep it from here.
I have a nominee, Kim Dolan for Secretary.
I'll start it.
Tracy?
Yes.
Paul Jonathan?
Yes.
John Schuster?
Yep.
Ruth Selby?
Yes.
Kim Dolan?
Yep.
And then America basketball.
Then all the stars that are. Then, do you want to come to me or do you want me to?
Um, you can go ahead. This is a fine conversation. It's not a real deal. So if you want to go to me.
Okay.
In addition, then I'll take it in there.
Okay.
And I will kind of be all of you. I will help you.
Um, so we will also, okay, so tonight, uh, like, the approval, uh, tonight, John?
I'm making a vote for an approval. Did you hear that it was presented?
Second, I'm. All in there?
Aye.
Hi. Any approval? Huh? All, all those?
Yeah.
Sorry.
I'm pretty sure everyone said yes, but I had to lose a minute away.
And the approval of the minutes from our thirteen meeting?
I'm making a vote for an approval of the minutes that is presented.
I'm second, I'm.
Now, for appointment and clarification, but you don't have to be in a meeting to approve the minutes. Um, you don't know what happened to me. It's a little confusing, but we need to vote enough people to pass the minutes and require the meeting. So you are perfectly eligible as four and all on set more to approve minutes. It's a choice about.
All in there?
Aye.
Any votes? Minutes are approved. We had one correspondence from Tanger.
No, if you support, please support every current quarterback. I don't believe that's a plan.
Okay.
Oh, we did get some other names as well. That came in after the end of the night. Um, Commander. All right, I welcome you up. Um, so I'm from John and Christine Hag. Uh, one of Amanda's very institute for the. In the original. Um, one from Ron and Agnes. Five. In opposition of the, of the, um, variant request. Ever look at tonight, the eight zero zero three. And from Alan and Eric Park, they were in support of granting the variants, um, ever look at tonight. So they.
Yes.
That is all the.
Any couple of interests?
Uh.
Okay, um, to who does this? Holy period ZDA point four dash zero zero three. A request for the granting of various article eight zoning districts. Eighty point six table of dimensions regulations. Size setback note and minimum size setback requirement in residential district shall be fifteen feet or ten percent of the longitude west providing that no side yard shall be less than seven feet. Located at seven nine three four north shore port on our mission lines through seven. And owned by John and Kristen. Okay?
Okay.
The application request for areas, um, two feet to the side. Your setback for the expansion of an existing attached garage. Part number four, personal ID. Twenty eight dash zero seven dash two seven dash.
And there did request that there ain't.
Yes, it's actually two point. Correction, two point eight.
Too many pieces of paper on that. So, Mary, I go for a point of clarification. We have a highest of five minutes first of all, but we had a thirteen, um, property.
Other property owners to the full of the conversation.
That's what I thought. Yes, property owners.
And it doesn't really like to look like a yard or something.
Good evening. Do you have any, uh, this?
Yeah.
Okay. First of all, I'm John Ed. And I introduce my wife, Christie, to the wife right here. Um, thank you for allowing this to come in. Um, request for various. Uh, Lieutenant Isaac, um, he's an extremely helpful, he's an analytical patient with me. He's the person I've ever done anything like this. And I agree with the piece you called out, and he's given me. And also like Lieutenant Dwayne, who's sitting next to my wife and his wife, Paulette, they are direct neighbors to the east. And they have written approval on the staining of variants that are passing. And then his furthers were applied by his presence this evening. And I'm sworn in at home, so, um, you can't hear me, but this, um, I would just, I would repeat. Without Dwayne and Paulette's approval. We wouldn't be this guy. I wouldn't go forward with this without the person directly involved.
So that says a lot.
Okay. Their neighbors again directly, two arteries, where the garage could be, but they are the ones who can be most affected. And actually, one is going to be most beneficial to the request. To overdoing and removing. Noise. vehicles. Tractors, trailers, ball trucks from the driveway, including the business area. And cleaning up the front of our house. The well side, Paulette, why not move it on the left, okay? So as of the fourth of today, they no longer have to look at that than when you look at the new house that we built. Well, we need to be clear that the goals of this project, the Christmas night, are undertaking a really twofold. One is that we need additional storage. Okay, downsides, from a house that we lived in previously, came from a basement, downward, and across, oh, the inner crawl space. That's the first thing. The second thing, so we need to move our storage. We have dozens and dozens and dozens of boxes that we access regularly. That are currently in the crawl space. And we need to move them there to the northeast way as possible. The second thing is move for other vehicles. We have a standard two car garage today, or asking to add a standard two car garage. And to be clear, um, when it was written, um, for a greater purpose, we're not, um, it's not the fifteen feet, it's ten feet, that's the current allowed area, which is kind of reset on a hundred foot on our lap, and it's that's what we're saying. Okay? Just wanted to make sure that that's all the end of work that is for, is that be.
John, just to clarify, we're starting here from the quick, um, with regards to some of the goals that we set for this project. Not only was it for the space that we needed, but also it's going to help with home values, not only our own home values, but home values throughout our play of the like Minnesota as well as the Green Lake partnership community. We're also going to, again, help with the product like, um, Minnesota much better that way. We're going to help with, um, we're going to talk about great, um, um. Great.
Code?
The great hundreds code, about our local businesses, and really, it's going to really, um, work with a lot more curvy or less.
Thank you. This is great support. I agree with this, uh. I agree with that, it's a whole lot different from what I was, yeah, it's mirrors intimidating in this case.
And when you have been publicly speaking for years, it becomes a.
Yeah. But physically, it's not, it's not. So again, um, the downsizing is, is what we're, um, really fighting with. We're asking for a twelve foot garage. A twelve foot garage scene is not anything out of the norm. That's what garage is like. Okay? So we're asking for the norm. And it will complement our current garage. We have. Um, a garage door. Eight feet wide, two feet worth of floor, a garage door eight feet wide, I mean, if I'm putting a garage in this new, um, space, if we, uh, if we get a roof here.
Okay.
See? Our garage. So, um. Let's talk about where's the garage. As I said. We're finally using it under storage boxes. Boxes, the depth, the shelf, the middle, from the floor to ceiling, the whole thirty foot, will be two feet deep. If you add on to that width, the width of a car, a car is seven feet wide plus, if you include the two sided mirrors, it's easily seven and a half feet. If you add that up, and we're already ten feet wide, there's no room. Open the door. You can't have a vehicle. I'm pretty big eyed. How would we be able to do that? Okay? So that's a rather big concern, that a vehicle would be able to store the garage that came down. So preparing for this edition, we consulted with our builder, we consulted with our architect. And we thought through many alternatives, willing to, as although I didn't let her discuss some of those alternatives, so. But before I forget, um, I did point out, I think it was a letter from some person that, yes, we had, um, we requested two feet, my ignorance, I do a little overhang. I didn't know that cone it in the variant. It does, okay? Um, I consulted my builder, and he is a psychopath or, um. That is me, who's representing, because I don't need a lot of, um, pay for that. Okay, so the alternative is that we, we talked about for, for this car and storage and other things, like tractors and trailers and, um, golf carts. We talked about bringing an outbuilding that would be to this, to the east side of the driveway, put it from the west side, then the right part, right part of the car, okay? Put it to the west side, I'm sorry, east side of the driveway. Uh, and it'd be the same size. Thirty by four, except we would be even closer to the east lap. So we immediately would, we'd be asking up for a two foot, eight inch variant, we'd be asking for. A ten foot variant, so we immediately eliminated that idea. Another thing we thought about doing was double stacking the garage, if that makes sense to you. Two garage moving towards the street, two more slices of our car. Now you get cars that are too deep in the garage, and if you wanted to take the ones that was deep in there out. That just didn't make sense to us at all. It would be very cumbersome, you know, in order to go to the.
It's also a curb appeal, like, you definitely just curb appeal by stacking the garage.
Yes.
The way the house would be totally in.
Yes, well, let me, um, put a little more flavor in that. Like, I hope all of you had the opportunity, and it was all you did. I don't know if all of you had the opportunity to come out of the house. Um, currently, the garage is set forward to the street. The other half of the house is pushed in where there's the bedroom to the far west, and there's our front door in the middle. I believe, for, that looks wonderful. If we're the double stack, now we have the right side, the east side of the house pushed out so close to the road. The curb appeal, as I already said, is lost, totally lost. So that's like, uh, is, is no longer, or too lost, was that though? The third idea, pretending, actually, is the worst, is putting the garage on the west side. So now we have two garage doors on the east, one on the west, curb, curb appeal is lost. We'd have to build a circular drive to hit it to it, very expensive. We'd have to remove a street, at least one, two, very expensive. And that circuit drive would have to go very close to the holding tanks, which are in the vicinity of the front door. And I'm thinking that could be, uh, a health, oh, issue. Don't know for sure. I'm just judging that, with that to research. So the third idea, last one, but it is awesome, uh, like, in our opinion. So again, we've consulted a lot of people, and we believe that solution is one we have put forward today. Twelve foot standard garage, maintaining a beautiful curb appeal, which I don't think anyone has, has seen. It's the most practical solution. Another thing I'd like to bring up, that's been highlighted in this letter, is the reason for moving the storage to the garage, to the crawl space. I unfortunately had an accident a little over a year ago. And I hurt my back. I went through two months of rehab. Unfortunately, it didn't work. Last alternative is to get surgery. I had surgery, but I still get surgery. I am not. Thankfully, but I'm not fixed, and I moved out of these tracks as a part of my back. I'm not able to lift and do things, let alone pick them up from the crawl space, crawl around in the crawl space, and bring them up to the main lot. So that is my personal ownership of this. Is accessing our storage items that we get it numerous times a year. And I can't ask my wife to do that alone, especially, and obviously, we're not getting any other, it's going to be harder and harder every year, but we're building by ourselves. We just gotta be able to get it by ourselves. We're relying on our neighbor's children coming from downstairs to help us. I'd like to also bring your attention to the letter that the architect, the Morgan is applying for us. He highlights the two foot. Civilly structure, sheroes are required on the east side of the drive. That's why I'm talking about two feet, eight foot garage door, and then two feet. That is required. He also states that we must adhere to the grant service code, or the service county code. Which, of course, we will do, and the twelve foot spaces needed to do that. We've already talked about the doll building, we've already talked about the double stack, those are a couple ideas that you had, had ranked, started. Addressing five points relative to article fifteen point four, I covered some of those, so I won't worry about doing it again. But the strict setback does not provide necessary storage for our items as well as the car. We are supported by our neighbors, and they will be benefited, benefited by that, by the entire expansion. Number three, um, we have statements, as I just said, from the architect, for the need of the, um, sheroes and the grant service code. And number four, referring back to paragraph five, which I just walked through, and I'm adding the different alternatives to answer number four. And number five is strict compliance of the zoning ordinance, which just doesn't fit our needs, doesn't solve our ownership. So that's what I have as a review of the letter that was presented. About a month ago. Um, included in that packet. Are there any questions?
Yes, I have a question. I'm looking at your site plan, and that are also, you're planning to build, um. Another story above the garage, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah. How many square feet will that be?
Well, we are referring to that typical room. And it's dependent on the proof of this orange. We find that visualizing as much space as we can, as wide as we can, based on what is approved or not approved here. We're gonna go how many feet deep, roughly? I don't miss planning this leave, but it hasn't been my last. I can tell you that we're gonna try to go as deep and as wide as we practically can, to utilize the space of both the current garage and the new garage. Does that count?
Yes, it looks like, um, of the current garage, so we could actually build a, you know, having a garage.
The bonus room can be built with.
Ma'am, ma'am, I need.
Oh, that's.
Roger, I need to be.
The, uh, I'm sorry. The bonus room can be built above the existing garage, that is our additional pressure. But as we've been, and our additional pressure was the third car garage. But as we've been sitting back talking about the, the addition of the bonus room, we are now considering expanding that bonus room to go above the third car garage as well. So the whole square footage, we don't know yet, because we can't go further with our architect until we know from the day of our G, our ten or twelve feet on the. Does that make sense, uh, to you?
I have a question as well. Um, one of the reasons that we have this setback is we're thinking about a rainwater control, rain, rain coming off of the roof, water going in your neighbor's property. What do you have in, in, I don't see any kind of drawing, and it looks like gutters or water containment, could the garden proposal go closer to the neighbor's property with visitors? You're increasing the armpit space, surface of the side of the garage, so for the pitch of the garage, then it may cause water to leak, are you planning on some amount of water containment for?
So we currently have others, and we have downsides that are dug into ground and, uh, pop up eight, ten feet away from the wall. Have you thought of using a similar solution with the new宅?
And we've had no complaints to the local household on water and certain other kinds of stuff.
I have a question.
Please.
In your item three, you spoke about, um, ten minutes close to your holding tanks. Has that ever been explored with the health department? Have you taken that step?
I have not. I, um, feel that that is the least desirable solution, putting the garage on the west side of the house. Having a, a single garage on the west, double garage on the right. Um, slow, um, traffic, and, and getting native, producing myself to get from garage to garage. Um, the curb appeal is just near the most person they has possibly. But the answer to your question, answered your question, and you already know how that is. Any other questions?
I have, I have a question. At the end of your garage, the lake side, um, where your garage stops, there's windows beyond that, those windows go to what?
A bed.
So thirty yards of it?
Yes.
That would prevent you from going any further back there?
Yes. Yes, thank you for bringing that up. Um, I was going to address that, but it was appropriated to address the letter in the last. Um, did you get that, get to that later while I was laughing, or potentially if you're probably counted and enacted, um, talk to that letter? Please tell me how to do the proper sequence.
They're gonna answer your questions right now, and then Paulette.
Okay, now that, I just paused. Okay, so Paulette, then why do you change your mind to Paulette?
Only if you call it a down.
So, yes.
This is, this is your opportunity to present us your case.
And once you sit down, your, your presentation of the case is over. Now, the public comment, you can be the last public comment for this speech, if there's something said that you want to make sure. We do the help.
Yes.
That's right.
So this will be a good time, if there's something you repeat in your back pocket, share with us.
So the number two, now, we're gonna finish later.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, good night. Thank you for that information. So, um, yeah, I was gonna ask, is there any questions, and that's the advice I had, was the site plan, any questions on site plan, what we're doing there? It's a twelve foot wide, thirty feet deep garage to the east side of the house. Any other questions on site plan?
Not a question, it was a comment, and I, because I call nice, because I throw a hundred two, and, um, square footage just, just don't make sense. And, um, but if your garage is not currently one thousand one hundred seventy square feet. Um, and I suppose that, and he says we've actually, it's twenty twenty four square feet, so I don't know that that makes a difference sort of more than that. But still, um, um, you know, six hundred four square feet is a sizable garage, but it's not quite that large, correct?
Yeah, I think it's currently twenty six by twenty two, or something like that. I have a. If angry at all. I know you talk loud, sir.
Yes, I believe the current size of the garage is twenty six by twenty, or twenty six by twenty two.
Okay.
Yep.
Good.
If the board decides to, or doesn't decide to, if they do not, um, you still plan on building a smaller garage if, if you're, you're in.
What do they have to do with that? Do you have practicality in putting a tower there to be attacked first? Um, again, the two feet, the seven feet for the drive, leasing the last?
The shear wall, I understand what you're saying with the shear wall, I mean, there is other ways to go on a property that, uh, in reference with the low bearing wall, without only two foot, like, bring this up, I mean, it can, you know, well, there are two foot aside, just to profit that use. To support the low load, but it is a cost.
Thank you for the information, um, by the architect or, okay. Um, but now, we still believe that three, while it is the two feet, the two fifty, so the order is that three, we still present the same problem, putting a tower there, put a store in the theater.
I understand. So one of the questions that you have in your letter is that you had the place to be built, basically, twenty nineteen?
Uh, we started in summer, uh, late summer of eighteen, and finished in June of nineteen, yes, sir.
Okay, so I guess my question is, just in hindsight, was it oversight, or you just didn't plan out big enough places when you built it?
Part of it was outside, part of it was unfortunately, did it finish my back? I have to.
Okay, so you were the builder?
Yes, sir.
You were the builder then, or?
I was not builder, uh, we hired, um, Roger Wayne.
Right, well, so just getting out of the time, if you'd known this, you probably would have built part of it, if you put it up.
Did I have that back in that time? Yes, sir, I would have built a garage.
Well, I understand, I seen that, and I'm like, well, I got a bad act, I can totally sympathize with you on that.
Yeah, not fun, is it?
Yeah, I understand.
So, yeah, we were reacting to what was delivered to us, like, we're trying to, uh, I understand. Thank you.
I have a question regarding procedure, since I'm here. When we go and, and we discuss as a board the five points, will that be a discussion on us, or should I, um, ask or talk about that now? Or actually when we're doing the five?
So, what's gonna, what's gonna happen, is we're gonna let, the property owner give his, his cake, please his cake to us. We then open it up to public comment, are the public in the public hearing, public comment is that given, and then close the public comment. At that point, we then discuss the merits of what's being done, kind of like jury question.
Sure, so I can, I can, um, progress those issues when we discuss it.
And if for some reason we have a question that we're, just don't have the answer that we wanna ask, we have the right or the ability as a board to ask the property owner, or maybe one of the public here, a question, but it's, it's not normal, we turn to them, or to our board discussion.
Thank you, and I will hold my comments for our discussion and stuff, okay.
Any other questions in the site plan? What comes right after that, this, again, my packet is a more, um, the, uh, uh, of the second floor, and this was the second floor, wouldn't we own, we'd own, um, the existing drive, yeah? Any questions in that? And the last thing from the architect is the elevation, and that shows the bonus room with the garage, and yes, with the bonus room currently owned over the existing garage. Questions in the elevation drive? The next, uh, in my packet is the letter from the architect, I believe I addressed all items, are there any questions in the architectural? Okay. Next I have in my packet is a letter from Dwayne and Paulette, who referenced that. If you're concurrence moving forward for us. My packet is going to address also has the hundreds, um, plumbing heating letter, as well as the Ellen and Erica Park letter. Okay, so that is it as far as me representing the information that I presented to the board. Any questions? Well, that's kind of all that information. Okay, with that, then I believe it's proper for me to address the letter that the boss presented to the board, that was given to all of you. The first comment that was provided by the boss was, it does not create hardship. Some people understand that, maybe they're fortunate enough, not that there are any physical fact or other type issues, then that possibly would understand that, but that is definitely a hardship for myself. So I, I believe my back is a health issue. And hardship also, and to like repeating myself too much, just reading my notes, is the hardship of trying to get it out of power, and you have less than a looks crazy to work with. There are comments of number one.
Oh, yeah, excuse me, are, are we referring to a letter that, uh?
Lo, lo, to the boss, right.
The boss?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Is that appropriate, to, to, I mean, the, we're not here to take it?
Um, I, I believe it would be appropriate for you to address concerns that are brought up by the boss. Um, because that's how we're gonna be, we're, we're going to be deciding, and this is a part of the quote-unquote evidence that's presented. I'm sorry, I can't talk, has it been presented to us to consider? So he's got something?
The letter is in the red, so he's, he's, you know, I don't.
It is. The letter was. We're concerned that we're gonna be talking about it for.
It's just a public forum, he doesn't, you know, he's reading off something, you know, if you're, I'm saying.
It's confused, it's confusing for the public, but this is for us to understand where he's coming from. That's our public comment sometimes, if we can't respond to the public.
Well, there are people here who, 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 yeah.
Well, if I may, then, yeah, this boss, our president, is he?
Yeah, are you?
Yes.
Here.
So I'll have a chance to see it.
Thank you, your public comment, yeah.
Hey, hey, I see, I'm sorry, maybe with, I'm just, I'm shaming, I thought this letter was included in package, that was more, so that's why.
We, we as a board have, I think Mr. Schuster is concerned with the people sitting in the audience, who may have been on the grid, and if they may not be, I don't know where, I don't know where, I don't know where, who's your.
Yeah, so I think everybody is aware of this, okay. So their, their first point, um, that there was no hardship presented, um, I respectfully disagree with that. The second point, um, which is actually, um, labeled number one here, is, is their second comment, is we did look at alternatives, and I think I've justified the three alternatives that did not fit our needs, and have come up with the best alternative, for not just us, but for our neighbors. Stuff like Peninsula and the entire community that surrounds us. Number two, is there already a second precedence of you approving this setback, additional two feet additions? Well, is my understanding that each time somebody asks for a setback variance, that it has to stand on its own merits? And therefore, there cannot be precedent set by the approval of this today. So I, I'm not sure where they're coming from with that statement. Also, I do know that last fall, this board, or whoever was on the board last fall, approved a setback variance for a couple that lives on East Shore Drive, on Duck Lake Peninsula, will relive for a garage variance. So even if it does set a precedent, it was already set last fall. I, we, hopefully, can add it up, setting a new precedence. And thirdly, about their, uh, number two comment, is that before United Township is what it is today, when there were guidance on setbacks, back when Duck Lake Peninsula, I don't know, fifty years ago, I'm probably correct, I haven't done that. Um, there were no guidelines, and there are numerous setback violations, which of course, in the grand public, it makes perfect sense, that are much, much more encouraging than what we're posting here today. So this number two second precedence, I, I'm sorry, I, I can ask the reason. The third point that they commented on, is they suggest that we could achieve our square footage requested by going deeper, instead of going thirty feet deep on this garage, sticking with ten feet, go thirty-six feet. Two concerns for that. One is, is that all nine meters, I have seven feet, doesn't quite cover it, unfortunately. Two is, we go thirty-six feet, we're now covering up at least partially a window, window to a bedroom, which is degress. That's a safety violation, we should not do that. So their point about getting square feet in a different fashion doesn't hold. Okay? Number four, unique circumstances. They said there weren't any. Well, I guess having bad problems isn't unique, unfortunately, for human beings. But it is, okay, there is unique circumstance for our certainty mission. Our situation like that, it involves, so I'm not sure how four pulls in there. Number five, I'm addressing that, we looked at alternatives, 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 not just raising myself, we've discussed them with professional experience builders and architects. We presented the best solution for us. And I find it very interesting that all the neighbors that this letter went to, I don't know, probably, that they're the only ones that are taking the time to show objection to it. Their life is empty, I don't know if you guys know that, there's not a house, there's not a building on it, they don't even live there. They live in Kingsley. They visit the property very, very eagerly. They do not contain their property, and if I may approach the board, can I say a letter, about that approach? No, I'm sorry, picture.
Here's a share you guys can ask, here's a share, you guys will tell them yesterday or now?
Yes, right.
And I'm sorry, just, just wanted you to know, I'm passing it. This is what I looked on, I wanna say Monday, I took that picture, and I do, this is early spring. The weeds and the grass are only this hot, just wait until summer hits, oh, no, I did, I'll get it. That's what it looks today.
She doesn't go, it's okay.
And it's only gonna work till the next weeks and months. Have they ever maintained it? Yeah. There are years when they never once come and cut the grass. There are years where maybe they've done it twice, but I have to look at this yard, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. I have their leaves below and below my lawn continually in the fall, of course, I pick them up. I don't put a macadamia, I pick them up because I'm your neighbor.
They pay for it, they do it.
I do, never said it was a bill. And they're the ones that are gonna help check. They don't live there, they don't contain their lawn, and I, and my wife are in a beautiful condition. I hope they're in there, I'm sorry, it's a good house. And we're just looking to keep that way, we're gonna maintain the great turf field. We're gonna maintain, increase the value, the value that can increase only benefits actually in a few lives. And it will benefit everybody in Duck Lake Peninsula, the greenland township, it's all for the good. I just wish more people who take pride in their homes and their properties, like Chris and I do. I grew up in a family, and when we raised our families, supported their neighbors. They helped their neighbors, like I did through the last one, I had. They had a family come over, and they graciously cut down the tree that's long right there, that was there, that was very, very nice of you, and I'm very made for that. What have I done for them, after they did all that work, they had ten, twelve people there, all for you, for their property. They were gonna cook hot dogs for their family in a fire pit. After all, the cleanup was done, with fire pit, from the rain, from the storm, it was flooded. I cooked hot dogs for that family. That's what neighbors do for themselves, they don't complain about each other, they help each other, they work with each other. If they had, it was frankly, a concern with what we were doing, I would have hoped they would take a mature approach to come and talk to Chris about it. Listen to us, we listen to them, they let us talk, we let them talk, and we, they're talking about, we understand each other, versus a letter that shows up to the board, from a next door neighbor who doesn't live there. At this point, I will ask the newer questions, because I've, I've done it, you said, you may ask. Thank you, appreciate it, go ahead.
Thank you.
At this point, I'd like to open the commentary at six forty-seven PM. Please come to the podium, name and address, please, I need a few minutes.
My name is Bill Crane, here representing Ron and Angus Bot, who's actually the property owner to the west that the Hags spoke about. Um, we submitted the letter to you, so I can go with all that, and I'm just gonna go over some highlights. Um, start out, um, definition of a variance. Variance means relaxation of the terms of the ordinance or such variance will not be contrary to the public interest in where owing to conditions procuring her, sorry, procuring her to the property and not a result of the action of the applicant, a literally enforceable, a literal enforcement of this ordinance will result in unreasonable unnecessary hardship or difficulty. The proposed variance request is the responsibility of the property owner. They can build a small structure to keep within the setback, they may not be able to go thirty-six feet, because it's mainly key curricula, but they can maybe go thirty or thirty-two. Um, I think their proposal was for a, a twelve-foot wide addition, um, with certain types of construction, you can go ten feet. Um, one type of construction is a portal frame construction with, with bracing and angle bracing to meet Gran Turismo construction codes. Um, we just, it's really not, I mean, the, the Hags have a beautiful house, so we just want, they do have a beautiful house, they keep their yard clean, they keep everything looking nice, but we just feel that, uh, speaking, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna say maybe me and myself, but it's actually on behalf of my in-laws, Ron and Angus Bot, who are here tonight also. Um, I'm just making the presentation for them, but it is, we just, in, I guess the issue of precedence, uh, maybe there was one variance already done, a lot back, um, but we just feel that, um, setting, allowing these variances from the allowed setbacks on, on these properties to the existing home, um, it's a beautiful home, it's all within setbacks, there are room and options that could be done to do an addition within the building setbacks on a lot. Um, I did outline, um, the five items that the zoning warrant reveals was, I guess, field that they need to improve the, the variance. Um, precedence is one, um, it is a item that is, um, brought to you by. Precedence is one. It is an item that is brought to you by the applicant with other alternatives that could possibly make it work. There are other options for storage options. If there's too much stuff, there are other options for storages outside. We're not saying hardship of a, of an act issue, we're not saying that that's not a hardship, but it's in regards to the black and white of the ordinance, a hardship can't be done by a hardship that was created by the, by the applicant. It's black and white. It's not self-created by the applicant, which this proposal is a self-apple, or a self-reduced, I guess you'd say, option to allow it. On behalf of the lots, yes, the lot, I mean, they've been property owners since nineteen eighty-one for over forty-three years. They use it more when they were younger. We use it off and on during the summer. We go down and clean it a couple times a year. Everybody's minds are busy. Yes, it is. They make a lot. But we just, we just oppose to the various requests just because of the precedents and then they do have other options out of their sight to make their, their issue due. Thanks a lot.
Any other Republican comment?
Well, it's.
You closed at six fifty-two.
Well, it's called a comment at six fifty-two. At this time, we'll go to board discussion.
So I think it's important to remember, we're looking at this. We have a look at what the, we're like a legal body. We're like an inquiry here. And what we, what decision we make, this final decision, they can appeal to the town board as a supervisor, they can just go through the court system. So we need to be very, very good when we go through making this. There's five things that they have need, all five. The neighbor being a bad neighbor is not on here. The neighbor being a good neighbor is not on here. It's very two-foot yard instance. Just so we remember that when we're having our discussion, that's what we're looking at is, does it meet these, these five? Pacular employees not on here for some reason. Sorry.
Well, you're helping me with this.
I'm trying, I don't have a doorstep because there are managers supposed to do it.
I guess I'm, it's not like a good deal. It's just not to the distance that they want, or it's still a deal. Even without the variance, they put that garage up, so it's not like you can't do it without this variance.
So what we've done in the past, with the previous CDA, that worked really well, to make sure we covered all five, is we start on number one. We discussed that amongst the board. We tried to get input from everybody that they needed or not, then we go to two, and then. So, so if, if you don't mind, um, I'm sorry, I'm off with Ains Root. Do you have any issue in favor or support of, do they meet their requirements for one? Do you believe, or do you have questions to discuss amongst?
I just, well, possibly, I have a comment that, that, you know, it says it will unreasonably prevent owner from using the property for a particular purpose. The property is already being used for a particular purpose as it is now. And health issues aside, I realize that is, it make, it can make life difficult, but I don't know that that is something that would, to me, varies. There's lifestyle changes that can be made with the amount of, well, I don't need to go into that. What can be done, but things can be changed. It's not insurmountable, and I don't know that variance of this, for the structures needed so that, so that they can use their property in a proper way. So I would say that number one is no.
Okay, Johnny, I have, on your take on number one?
No, I'm on the same page with that, including, actually, you had, and you're actually, you know, increasing that, so I'm on board.
Hey, well, since we're here, we'll come back to you, but I'm just here to speak neutral. I think a certain, restrictions of governing areas setback. See, I'm always torn on this one. Because I, I use the property, I don't really want to own that property. The problem is, I live in a house door next door, I have a property next door, I live across the street. That's what people do on the property, limit my ability to enjoy the property. So we've had so many rules for that. Two foot eight inches, this is a lot. But two foot eight inches is two foot eight inches above what the zone, or the planning commission and the township board says is appropriate. By allowing them that two foot eight inch, allowing them to use that garage for a permanent purpose. They're allowed to have a garage that they can store their stuff, and that's, that's allowed within that area. They're not wanting to put in a parking store. You know, this is something that's permitted in that area, so I think that this, this creates an unnecessary kind of burden, burden some for them to be able to use their property the way they want it. I would disagree. I think they do need number one. Some other ones I struggle a lot more with. And I think in most cases, there's a good argument that they need, that most applicants have gone through and they wanted to do what's right. We have small lots that have done a hundred years ago. But I think it does mean the, the number one.
Just one thing I did not bring up, I guess I might have. There's another reason why they actually have these variants, the distance between, obviously, when you build a structure that close, and they actually have got a bit of fire, that really creates problems for my son neighbor. There's a distance that you really wanna have, so that fire doesn't transfer to the house next door. Closer you get, the more dangerous it gets for my son neighbor also, so there's a little, but why they.
We did have that discussion with the authority at township meeting, or township board meeting, about this is required for us to get through and for safety. It's not as big a concern as some will be, you'd believe it is a concern, but it's not, so.
Right, I just wanted to bring that up.
That is, that is a good point for the board members, but it's also the, our.
I think she is gonna speak. I think my doc about that, depending on, depending on.
Sorry, on Paul?
Sure.
Um, I think a look at this, if, if we didn't grant this, just so not allow them to use their property to the best purpose of their use. And one of the things that sticks in my mind is this property is a hundred foot wide, is that correct, Jason?
I still have a suspect in somebody's assistant, that's always correct. The property is a hundred feet.
And this, this request would keep them seven foot six inches off the lot line?
I'm just kidding. I mean, it's seven foot four inches.
Yes, seven foot four inches from the overhangs, from the use. And if this lot was seventy foot wide instead of a hundred foot wide, there wouldn't be any need for request because they could go within seventy.
Correct.
So, as I take a look at it, the lot was seventy, and we wouldn't even be here tonight. And for many of you sort of people, they're not responsible for this lot. And it takes the ability, the way to use the property cyclically and effectively for them. I do think it needs to be required. And I have a poor fire department, I'm a chief, I'm a level four instructor. You don't put fire departments, don't put trucks between buildings. You put firemen in hoes, and if it's, I mean, just so you don't put two hundred thousand dollars truck between.
No, okay, I was not, I was saying the fire itself, you know, you don't put all that.
Yeah, that was referred to our board.
So it comes off better than my, my.
Yeah, so even if, if the lot was seventy foot wide and seventy, that's still sufficient room, might be for firefighting. Yeah, I, I do think it needs to be required.
Tracy?
Don't ask.
Don't ask. Any questions on this for the board, or anything you think we should discuss on, on number one?
I don't think that they need it, honestly.
And then, now what do you measure? Now what do you, what do you think? Do you think they need the requirements?
I think they do need it in the way that, again, when I was reading the paperwork, it does say ten, but then I meant almost seven feet. And if it's seven and four, and the way they're looking to put it on, it's not like, and the driveway is already there too. So, I mean, it does help them use the property in a manner that they wanna use the property. And it also gets all the stuff off the street. Because currently, there was some stuff sitting outside, just in the driveway, and it's gone.
So, so you're, you're.
I'm thinking there are several few reasons, yes, also, it's less stuff there, it's not worth it.
So, no, 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 yes, yes, yes. Any other alternative?
I think I would be alternative.
Okay. Root being the problem here, I'll make sure I count it, six and six, that'd be bad. I thought that was Kate, I wasn't positive. Okay, so we're, we're three and two in favor on that, so we put, as a board, we believe that they need number one. Number two is the variance produces stamp for justice, the F pin, as well as the property owners in the district. I'm gonna start with you this time, John. That way she's not in the hot seat right off the bat, and I'll be going.
I mean, by definition, it's fifty-fifty. I have people on that definition. I mean, I don't know how it might do justice to the applicant. I don't see how it, you know, property owners in the district.
So, so on this one here, they got stuff out of their front yard. And when they bring their stuff out of the front yard and put it into the house, that makes it more, more appealing for the neighbors than that. And we get a lot of calls in the township office about the neighbors got all this junk, oh, believe me, I know a lot of stuff. I got a lot of stuff. And by, by, you can't really get your stuff into their, their garage, that's a little bit of a challenge.
To me, I don't think that's why the variance is, in my personal opinion, as far as granted, well, variances. I'm not really, because I, I don't know what person goes to their house, whether they actually use it for their stuff, they need more separation. That, that's my issue is, just because you have them, or it doesn't mean you're not gonna fill up and have more stuff, so that, that's my thing.
So that's a no for you?
I'd say, yeah, I mean, really, I'm not seeing anything that's, yeah, I have.
And as I spoke with others on this in the board before, I, I struggle on this one because I could argue that justice does do stamp for justice for the homeowner. They're asking for those things, they need that. And then the stamp for justice for the neighbors, for other property owners in the district, is where they get, and create property value for law. That's a, that's a big benefit for the other neighbors that their property is not working on. The curb appeal and the appearance and the neighbor being clean is, is a potential, so.
It's a potential, but it's negative on our side, because those people don't want to turn up in someone's, their taxes. It's like, it's a possible, I mean, as far as, we can look at both.
So, in, in my opinion, it needs number two as well. And that, that's, that's the reason why I, I believe it.
Yeah, that's fine.
And that's why we have more money on the board, so we can have these discussions. And I appreciate that everyone else is gonna say, yes, you're right. Exactly. And on Paul?
Sure, I believe it does. I mean, it does, that's a justice to the applicant, they can use the property in a manner that they want to use it, and if they can't use it, they're because they're unable to use it, and so I think that's true as far as other property owners in the district. You get all the stuff out of the yard, you get to put the bolts, the trailers, everything out of the yard. And I think that, that does help because it makes it look better, which, which would increase property value. But then again, the thing that I think about too is, you've got general public driving by, they see a bunch of stuff in the yard, and maybe some people come by and start thinking, well, we could start around here and here. When it's all outside, it's out of mind, right? People don't think about that, so I think it does need.
I think it needs. And I just have a comment that you don't need to know what.
Correct.
Um, because I was out there, and I was just standing there between the two homes, trying to eyeball and visualize it. And, um, less the neighbors hurt, more the next door, I personally wouldn't want to build it that close. Because if you have a shutout back, you build a garage, if you're standing right there, just visually, there will be very little running space looking straight through. So I don't see how, how that really beautifies the neighbor, for the neighbor, for, for the homeowners, certainly. They didn't need to have a very lovely home, and a lovely property. But just looking at that, and the variances are made for a reason. And if I, I would not want a, um, building that close to my property, my, it doesn't have to be there. So that's, that's just my opinion. That just visually, it really reduces the green space, or if you're looking from the street to the back. It's very close to my neighbor's home.
Now you can.
I feel that it does need, and it does use a stamp for justice to the applicant, as well as the other property owners. Again, to getting the stuff out of the yard, getting it tucked away, getting, you know, just you drive by. You got everything there, you look out at neighbors, and it's all nice and tucked away, and it just helps the neighbors too.
For a one, I believe that one, it also believes in this authority. Now, the board must consider what granted a lesser relaxation of relaxation than a fight for, gives a stamp for relief to the F pin, to be more consistent in justice to other properties. A lesser relaxation would not do the F pin justice. I don't believe, all right, I struggle with this one, meeting this a lot because I think a lesser relaxation would do justice for the neighbors, because of the green space, the curb appeal, the, the harvest surfaces in the area, water running off. And we're in a watershed right there. There's a lot of things, so I, I really struggle with this. I'm not sure it does meet number three, so I'm gonna go with no on that one. Paul?
Oh, that's like, uh, your, your poll, or I think it probably does. If you give a lesser relaxation to it, they're not gonna be able to do anything that meets their need. They could have a tent, but it wouldn't really meet their need. And the other properties, I think it would do justice because they don't have all the stuff to look at. The neighbor to the west with the vacant lot, it's not on their lot lines, it's to the lot line to the east. And that neighbor has no problem with that. It's located actually closer to their driveway than their home. There's already a shed that's up there. I think that a lesser relaxation to that would not give them what they need to have for their personal benefit.
You're talking to the neighbors?
Yeah. No, if, if they were not allowed, go twelve, and they had to go ten, that would be a lesser right.
Correct.
So if they did that, it wouldn't allow them to use to the best of their ability or what they actually desire.
And you were referring to the property owner, the applicant?
Yes.
So.
And the other property owners, I see that this would be just, just a viable to them as far as a good thing. It's more curb appeal, it looks better, it's not gonna be an issue for, for curb appeal, and you get all the stuff out of the yard, I just think it benefits, yeah.
So your guess, I have these ways, my book may change, I hear some from other board members to say something that I didn't think of this. Our right or our ability to really change our, and right now, I'm still, no, I, I, I see what you're saying. But it really hasn't sold me any guess for this one yet, so.
Well, and if we went to a, if, if, well, we call it, we buy a lot of those all pretty much at that, yeah. And they physically do that, they can, being a bad building inspector who's saying mission in a county, you're right, they can. Way more difficult, way more money. To me, that's the lesser way to go. Inspector, thousands of these buildings, at any point garage with two foot support on each side is the norm. And yes, you can do it differently, but choose the other substantial cost. I just think that this would be the best for them, and the neighbor to the east where it works and doesn't care, I mean, they're okay with it. I think it would do justice to the other property, plus if you don't do it, they're not gonna be able to put all their stuff in there, so we're still getting all the things in the yard. I think that, I think it does.
Okay, Tracy?
Top one.
These are on top, that's what we're here at. It was easy, wouldn't have to do this.
I don't think that. I guess I agree with what Paul was saying, I would say that's it.
Okay, so you're ready. Anything?
But I can probably be swayed, so.
So, you're, you, you, you got anything to say that might change my opinion?
Not at all, perfect.
Okay, perfect. Just cause I'm low, it means I'm right.
And frankly, yes.
Okay, just need your thoughts.
Um, you know, yeah, lesser relaxation is not what they're looking for, but it is, it is a possibility. And so, then again, it's a matter of, you know, what is, what do you feel is most important? To stay within the variance, um, you know, do you allow a little step back? Or, you know, do, um, do you connect this for the homeowner to stay, um? Again, I think there are a lot of options, um, when you have a lot of things. They do have a very sizable garage, as is now, um, I think sizable, we have one that's very large, and we have two cars in there, and each wall is just all storage in there. So, I mean, it can be done, so it's like, is it a need or is it a want? And I think that's what I'm looking at it as, you know, we really, I do not live without this, whereas wow, that'd just be really great to have. So, that's what you have to consider in mind, again, with, um, the Brazil hornednesses. And also, um, just listening, I think we all go by, agree it's a lovely property. Maybe for those that are listening, are picturing like a trailer with all kinds of trash in the front yard, and everybody's like, oh, this stuff in the front yard. When I went by, there was a, um, a parking van, a vehicle, and a, and a jet ski. And if you actually, you know, living on a lake, if you drive down the road, um, most driveways have boats and, and things parked and done. It's just the nature of, of your location. So, that's just my opinion.
Thank you, John?
Well, again, um, it's not like he's not, he wouldn't have a chance to go to the garage, and two foot, that'll seem like a lot. To me, I mean, it's not like the design of the garage, it adds space, but I can't, again, I can't tell you, I'm not gonna say what he's gonna use it for. I mean, for all I know, he said how many times, five years, ten years, whatever he can places. So, I, I'm, I'm not seeing any hardships by not having that extra shoe for it. I mean, he still got a garage, and so he's gonna have space above it. As he said, he, you know, he's got a contingency plan, or we don't know where it is, but it does, we have to, the variance, um, things are gonna change as far as what he might do or not do. We don't know that, that's by his own permission, so it might be a bigger one, John, for the second level, I mean, just by his own letters, the boxes and stuff. I mean, I think it doesn't matter to me what he's using for his loft, it doesn't seem fun, you know?
So, so the question we're, we're looking at here is, considering a lesser relaxation would give him substantial relief? Do you think that would give him substantial relief to give him a one foot variance?
I think it's the same, um, as present, uh, needing his tent, or in just keeping it, uh, the same without having various costs, right?
Okay, I just, I'm only trying to put a, you're saying.
Yeah, no, I'm saying, he still, a lot of them go to the garage.
So, you're not on number three.
It sounded like you were stopping on the garage, or, or the garage, excuse me.
So, Kim, your thoughts on number three?
Not really sure about one. I can see it both ways, it's still a bit hard to try and, you know? So, I can say yes for this and no for that, but it's just, you know? Can we make that one?
Nope. I, I think we should continue, you're going down, and number three is where we're at. Right now, it's, it's two, two, I, I'm still on, I can see some of the things Paul said, it makes sense to me, that I hadn't taken into consideration, but it's not, I'm just. You know, we're looking at what we do on this board, doesn't set a precedent. Well, just cause we grew a variance for garage two months ago, or eight months ago, or a hundred years ago, doesn't mean we're gonna do it next time.
No, I don't even know what the, you know, I can't, how can we do something that we're not recalling?
Because that one sort of got a piece of property, ten, I don't.
Yeah, I can't, I don't even know what to talk.
So, it doesn't, that, so the concern about the set of precedent, this is somebody's property, somebody's right, to be able to enjoy it, but it also, we, we have it going for a reason, and. I'm not sure what a lesser relaxation, that would, would give them substantial relief?
Well, you're just telling the story, I mean, unless you get a large, you know, again, usually, you gotta do curb already. If you gotta learn this vehicle, you're not gonna put it beside you. Again, it's not a, what the heck you use it for, it's just, it's a, it's a, it's a, you know?
I, I think.
Yeah, once you say two foot, you know, yeah, you say two foot, but if you want to, you could really have to go ten foot more, fifteen foot more.
Well, my thought of this one is, is a lesser relaxation, so instead of giving two foot, eight inches, you're giving two foot or, or three foot. If he doesn't have the two foot eight that he's asking, then he's not gonna be able to do what he intends to do with the garage. So, that's kinda where I don't know. Yeah, it's not gonna give him.
When you bring up cost, and the thing, and honestly, I know you've done lots of, like, but there is no extra cost to have smaller.
No, I, that's a cost.
You said because substantial cost, if the substantial cost increases, it'd be more smaller, to ten foot versus twelve foot.
But the point is, my, my experience is that that would be, be more about.
It's really not that much, but that's beside the point. I don't think anybody, you know, wants to kind of cost it.
Yeah, yeah, it's not a issue.
Yeah.
And really, with a lesser relaxation, how would that look aesthetically on front of houses? You know, I mean, the way he's got it worked out, he's got it worked out where it looks like it was part of the house when the house was originally built. And I see it sound where people had just thrown some on the side of it because it could, and it doesn't match, it doesn't.
That would be a loss.
Huh?
That would be a loss, I don't, generally.
You know, so then you go, okay, so then is it really doing a justice to people in the neighborhood having something smaller that doesn't actually look like it matches the house?
Well, don't be saying it's not gonna match, like, well, smaller, that's the whole thing, is, you can make anything match if you want to, it's, it's, I don't think, it's about matching anything. You can actually, that's not a term for it. It's just the size of your home, it's all, I'm aware of the things, um, if you wanna make, make it match, it's also a space, I think, yeah.
May I swing back to neighbors?
Okay.
Um, there's many comments that I made that, their, their neighbors to the east are in favor of this. I think they're very, and very kind of neighbors, but, um, I just, I don't think the decision should be made, cause the neighbors think it's okay, that it's okay. Because, and we're different neighbors, they might not like it, will they sell the property? The new property owners might not like it, or look at the property, they're like, why are you too close to your house? I, I don't want that, so I don't think the approval of the neighbor should factor into looking at whether or not he passed this variance.
I'd like to go back a couple of words about the neighbor. You guys, neighbors, water.
Which, which neither.
In, in favor of, I'm sorry. That'd probably help, right, if I exchanged it on a looking for. Is that the Luke's lot?
No, it's the park, the parks.
Parks live nowhere near them, they're over.
Parkway just.
I know how.
This is not just a lot of neighbors, it's groups of right now, and this is down the road, this, this house up here, fifty, a hundred years, more than one, so.
I just wanted to make sure, nothing is, like, they missed that.
Yeah, I'm, I mean, to judge upon the next, the neighbors right now, I mean, yeah, they can change, they can change tomorrow.
But Amy, I said something, we're shattering, I didn't catch the first time around, although we've heard this, and there's not any, any in there that does. You know, it's, this is, this is another, I, I go either way on, but I'm not convinced that it, that it does meet three, in my mind. So, without you, Kim.
I'm not too excited, I just don't have to say that.
Okay, so we've got no on that one. The need for the variances due to unique circumstances specific to the property. Paul, what's ever you on this one?
Well, I can go first.
You do.
I'm not sure what you mean by unique circumstances, I, I guess it's fixed in many properties a hundred foot wide, if you had a setback, if the property was seventy foot wide, you wouldn't be here, right? So, is that unique to the property, is that considered unique? I, I'm not sure, there's nothing else that's probably different with the property, other than the fact that it just happens, you know, it sets up the.
Um, we, in the past, for, for.
Sure, yeah.
Point of discussion, we, we have some properties in Green Lake Township that are extremely small, that make this one most huge.
Oh, sure.
And by, by the way that we, the town, by we, I mean, the township drew the maps and plotted everything out, and allowed houses to be built down there. Your house is automatically in a property that is, doesn't meet the zoning requirements. So, that would be a unique parcel, because we, it was created.
The old, the old place, the old box, and the old house, or whatever, no matter what you do, you can't go to that pit.
Mm-hmm, that might be a unique parcel, okay.
So, that's what you mean by unique?
That, that's my interpretation of it, and that's kinda what some of the board members in the past, that, I mean, that's like, you gotta interpret, cause that's why we're here. And I think John might have it.
Well, that's pretty much the word, all you need, I mean, if this, the closing changes throughout the years, and now the property can't build on, now you need to put it down there. But now, you know, at the time, the house, and the house was just built two years ago, three years, or just recently, it's a new build. But if you bought a piece of property that, you know, you, it's fifty by sixty, a lot of stuff wouldn't fit on there from, you know, your subject, whatever, which you make it unique. And now you have to make some changes to make it billable, otherwise, it's a useless piece of property. So, that's where the uniqueness comes in, I have, you know, can you still build on it, have what you're asking for? Which, obviously, at the time, I don't know if you asked for a larger house, and they told us it's large, you know, I feel, I'm not pretty of that, but this is a relatively new build, so, um.
I think that's a good, that's kinda what I was trying to.
Yeah, well, that's where you look at it, unique, the fact that you got, you got a parcel ground, and without some variance or something, you couldn't use that parcel ground that you need.
That would be unique, right.
And this one does not fit, that is the unique, you can't build on it.
It's not as small, and somebody, like, it's not the game you're saying, some of these parcels are on here, I don't know how, I gave it by no doubt, like, cause even on the best day, you have three hundred square foot house on it.
Well, if they take your definition, that does not meet.
It definitely not, yeah, not, I mean, that definition, I don't, oh, it's only.
No, you know, you could have a one acre parcel, which is a, a parcel that's available for a lot of houses, if you wanna put a five hundred square foot rent all time. You're not gonna be setbacks, and that's not a unique parcel, have a one acre. Okay, my impression.
The great, that does not meet that, do you?
So, you're a no on that one? Tracy.
I'm a no on that one, I don't think.
Ruth, any comments?
Um, I think I have to agree that the property, it's not due to, this is a property, it's that, 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 it's a social, yeah, I'm just saying. Yeah, wouldn't, could have should, it's like I said, you know, could they have built it bigger, when they initially did, moved it over, that, and it wasn't an issue. But it's, this is the house they wanted, and they built it, and it stayed within the setbacks, and there's only requirements, and, but now, the addition does not meet it.
What's up here for comment, I'll leave it to you, John, we'll check, Mark.
That's my comment.
I think I agree, Jan, and it's something you're.
I have a question, I mean, you, you said that.
Meet is your last. I, I am in agreement that it does not meet, cause it's not a unique parcel. Um, the situation that they have to find themselves in with some health issues, isn't something I look at, it's a unique because of this, and. There's people who have all kinds of issues that still have a property like that, um. It's, it's. Arson in the town that could have built bigger, did reshaped the house around it. I think I don't believe it meets number four either. Kim, where?
I also agree with Andy.
Okay, so we're no on number four. Tracy, we're coming to you first, but the problem and resulting need for the variance has been created by strict compliance with the zoning ordinance, not by the applicant or the applicant's predecessors.
Definitely not the applicant's predecessors, and, um. I do not feel that another type of that. I feel that the applicant. The strict compliance is not, the applicant has a lot of things, and I do not feel that they need. Uh, the fact that the there, the zoning ordinance is, is, is completely, um, out of their stuff. So, I would say that, I do not feel that.
Ruth, I don't have my idea on the health, I'm not bad at news.
Um, I have to see this, so. Tracy. I still can't see, you're not the only one, Andy. I know, but I, I don't have my glasses on either tip, so. So, um, yeah, it, it's not, um, because of the zoning ordinance that this issue has come up. It's, um, again, owner's desire to have more space, where space, or where building should have. That's not a problem.
Thank you, John? I don't agree with that, I think it was. So, you're a no as well? Ruth convinced you no. Ruth put the worst problem. Okay, now we go to me. The problem resulting from variances has not been, has been created by strict compliance with zoning, not by the applicant or the applicant's predecessors. I also agree, does not meet this one. Um, the property is big enough, you could build the house with everything that you wanted to have the size, had you had the foresight to do this. We're now looking here at twenty twenty-four versus twenty nineteen nineteen, and go, I'd like some more space. Um, I'd like more space for my stuff, we're downsized, we've got crawl space. Um, all that is applicant's desires and wishes, um, I'm sure they deal with the warrant. Um, our, it's a need, I'm sorry, um, cause they wanna eat their stuff, I understand that, I also like to eat love stuff, but. I don't have so much room, and I also am loaded on space, and understand the pains of the zoning ordinance sometimes. So, I am also leaning all on this one, and I could ride along for a long time, but I.
Paul. I could lie on this one for, forever, I guess. Um, it's the homeowners' desire to do something, um, the zoning allows to do something, but not what they actually need. But if you take a strict, like, this, uh, compliance with the zoning ordinance, okay, so it's for the use of the home, and their desire to have it more user friendly, but it doesn't meet that, so that would have to be, um. And again, you could also argue that almost everybody comes for variance, but.
All of those couple members, that five is one I always struggle with, and there's two of them, we had them, like, the, if there was any house that meets five, that's the one. I mean, it's screaming that that was, and there's a lot of their, you go fifty fifty, I'm sure, this one I don't even see as a fifty fifty.
The sound shield doesn't need for, uh, I mean, yeah, or it's not, you think you know, that I'm putting scrutiny to it, but, yeah, you're not all looking at it.
Um, a lot of fans fight on, on the fence, and it's easier to fall in favor of the, the applicant than not, but this is not, in my, one of those in some way. Paul, Kim, where are you on this one?
I am also a no, um, it's more a desire than.
So, at this point, Kim, I'm turning it over to you, to ask if any of us wanna make a motion to approve or deny.
Can I make a motion to approve or deny the variance request?
So, the discussion got a bit, it sounds, uh, like to make a motion to deny, I'm, I'm, it just doesn't need a hardship as far as I've heard and seen the board members to say.
Can I suggest some, Bridgette add to your motion?
Absolutely.
It does not meet Article fifteen, Auto Appeal, Section fifteen point four variances, it does not meet Article fifteen, Section fifteen four. So, satisfying? Perfect. I will second that. I will second that.
I have a question, because I'm doing this for, we have to meet all five.
All five.
I mean, if you don't meet all five, they want to put us to no, but we call up the variance.
At that point, we should not, but that doesn't mean that a board wouldn't go rogue and, and then, our, if they, if a neighbor was angry, that we, let's say we said we wanted grand variance. And the neighbor didn't like that, that we granted that variance, because it didn't meet all five, they could appeal to a court system, and him or a cert, or a, or a court. And that judge would say, the zoning order of appeal screwed this one up, we're gonna overturn their decision. Doesn't mean we can't go against what the rules say, but our, our decision to overturn, that's why we go through all five, I think.
So I, we have three there, no, and either a yes.
Correct. Uh, I got three no, two yeses as well.
Who's more than?
I did. Now, Kim, you agree?
I do a no call vote, um.
So you're gonna go back through your list, probably starting with, um, under motion to deny.
Okay. A motion to deny the various requests, uh, false?
No, all three.
All false.
All denied, yeah.
So a yes is not due under variance?
Yes, okay, that would be what I have.
Tracy?
Yeah.
Um, um, Andy?
Yes.
I also vote yes.
And Ruth, of course, she doesn't get a vote tonight. She got her team back the one I got.
So, seeing as how we did not meet all four, the four through five, we have denied your various requests.
But you can hear us out, but if we're not able to receive it.
I think, do you want to say what, like, go back?
Um.
I just like to have another record to do with this.
Um, we're gonna do, we're gonna, we've got other business, we're probably not gonna do anything, then we're gonna have public comment, we can make public comment at that time if you'd like. And then we're gonna go back to the board for comments, and then we'll adjourn the meeting after that. So we've got a couple things to do yet, and the meeting's over, if you guys don't wanna stay, you don't have to. Um, you're more welcome to, it's lively sometimes during more discussion, sometimes it doesn't. Um, you know.
When that, the right time to shoot.
There's no other difference, we don't need to do anything, so now you're gonna call public comment, you don't have to argue for that. People don't go for hours, some of us are, we're.
Any public comment?
This will be a good time for you, Kim.
Just, uh, clarification, so unfortunately, since we're in that, that means we are restricted to ten feet.
Correct? You'd have to follow the current zoning ordinance, and I have the ability to answer that question for you.
Okay, so we will still require an overhead, for ten feet. I don't wanna waste your time for not meeting, I don't wanna waste another four hundred fifty, about a hundred dollars. What we do about the overhead, maybe feed with a ten, ten foot wall. And if you have the other records, I know.
I'm, I'm gonna answer that, that this is public comment, we have staff who makes that decision, and you don't agree with their decision, you can appeal that to the zoning board of appeals. I would take into consideration what you've heard, see, whether or not that would be a successful use of your, or appropriate use of your money, I can't advise one way or another on that. But the zoning administrator, or as I say, the acting zoning administrator, or making a ruling on whether or not the, what your proposal was met the requirements of the zoning.
So, solely about that, is it?
And it's, cause all these, well, thank you. Yeah. Sorry, Isaac.
Any other public comment?
So you can't go into this subject?
Public comment at seven thirty-five?
Isn't that all? Anything else, any board members?
Any, any comment? Four comments?
Thank you for running, eight and four.
I just wanna say, I'm glad to see we've got lively discussion on this board, um, got, uh, board member involvement, going out to take a look at the site. And this is not an easy spot to sit on, that we're affecting people's ability to use their property and their neighbors. So, this is one of the top of the board here, and you know, you guys.
Ruth's so, first of all.
And, and keep in mind, just because I'm loud and I say something one way does not mean, I can't be swayed if you've got something that can be visioned, otherwise, I don't wanna hear it. You got something, I don't wanna talk anyone down, I think you all feel that.
Yeah, that's one of the strong supporters, I would say, if you want to, you want to, you need to be, you need to, and angle look at it, and.
And I, I know you're gonna stay serious on the township, but I might not, I'd like to hear your, as well, and Paul, I don't know, go around and, Tracy, I've been here a couple years.
Yeah.
And that's all I got, is thank you for what you guys are doing here, and thank you for stepping up, and thank you for putting up.
Anytime, I mean, um, go for it, it's an idea to be bold.
You're a penny count, are you?
No. I think you have something to say, or? No, okay. Oh, right, you want for a motion, Richard?
Motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second motion?
Second motion.
All in fair?
Aye.
All's meeting, it's.
All opposed.
Anybody opposed?
Aye.
You're a decent person.
Meeting is at thirty-six P M.